Which I can ju- I can follow along, it's okay. Oh, I bet that's it. No?
Can you see the agenda now?
You hit the pin button, it'll pop it up.
Hit the pin button?
Yeah, it'll pop it up that way.
Yeah, I hit the pin button and all of you came up. Hang on.
Click on, click on just the one that has the little box with an arrow.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay, Madam President, I think we're ready to start the meeting.
Okay. We will call this meeting of the Ohio High Point Joint Vocational School District to order. Roll call please. Eric, can you do roll call?
Eric, you're muted.
Okay.
Eric, are you there now? That's, that's better. Do you do roll call? We're ready for roll call, please.
Okay, Boswell? Brooke?
Here.
I saw Tom. Is Tom not with us anymore? Buck? Burrows?
Here.
Campbell?
Here.
Dunham?
Here.
Ludlow?
Here.
McConnell?
Here.
McMahill?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Bowser is not here. No one saw that, did you?
No, I didn't see him at all.
Okay, Purcell?
Here.
Reams?
Here.
Savage?
Here.
Stanford?
Here.
Wallace?
Here.
Tom Brookhart, are you back? Chuck Buck, are you back?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Tom's listed as being here. I mean, he's still on.
Yeah, I see that.
Brian Wright said he would be late.
Okay. So do we want him? So, I think I saw that Tom was there also unless something's muted or something's not going right for him. So do we want to do the pledge of allegiance? Um, we could just say that, please?
Yes.
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
That ought to come out great on the recording.
So welcome, everybody. We're going to move to item three, comments and communication. Um, introduction of guests, Dr. Smith.
Uh, I think, uh, you know, you can see on the side that we have some of the administrative team that has joined us again tonight. And I know that we have a WPKO, uh, also represented at least, uh, from the press.
Okay, thank you. So for the district updates, item three C, Dr. Smith?
Yes, so, um, just to let you know that we are, uh, currently, you know, we're gonna have to start building a plan for, uh, personal items and some type of pickup. Uh, as we've now, uh, been told that we're closed for the remainder of the year. Uh, and so we'll be working on that with the administration team. Uh, we spent today about two and a half hours, uh, in a building meeting, uh, with our attorney. Uh, working on the ideas, uh, to bring the team, uh, back in line together, uh, timeline, uh, for the project. Um, value engineering reductions and things of that nature. Chris, um, I can't think of his last name off the top of my head, is the, uh, construction attorney from Burton Eckler, um, that Ann, Matt, and Eric and I have been working with, uh, over the last, uh, two or three weeks. Um, he led the meeting today and will be leading, uh, future meetings. Uh, we plan to have new estimates by May eighth, uh, to get to our thirty million dollar goal and, and meet again on May twelfth, that Chris will be leading, uh, that meeting. Um, I don't have Chris's quote, but, uh, yet, but I am sure this is gonna, uh, cost us some money, uh, to have Chris help us work through this process and get this back on track. And, uh, I think we just need some direction of where that should come from, whether that's the building budget or general fund. It would be my recommendation that we, uh, take those funds possibly from, uh, uh, the investment earnings and the building and leave the building budget, uh, where it's at currently and, um, and use some of our investment funds in the general fund that we place there to pay these attorney fees to get us, get us, um, through the process here. Uh, we also will need to be doing a, a page by page turn, um, with the, when we get to DD estimates here before we bring it to the board. And so, uh, I would like some guidance on that from the board as to whether, uh, they would like that to be, um, the full board, utilities and grounds committee, or like Matt and Ann, as we've been working with President and Vice President on the project so far, um, to be part of the page by page turn through DDs. And then we would bring a full estimate of that DD process to the board. It is projected to take place in July, between July thirteenth and July seventeenth. And so I'll come back around to that and see, uh, what the board thinks. Also, we've been working on PPEs. Um, so far, as a district, we haven't made any PPEs. We were working with getting, uh, liability insurance cleared up as well as working with our attorneys to have the proper waiver, uh, release form to be signed. We now have that all in place. Um, and have cleared that to where we can make PPEs if they're requested. A couple days ago, I got, uh, two requests, uh, from the health department for two different entities. And then, uh, by Monday, they pulled those requests and said they had found, uh, they had been given a, a, a set of what they needed and those, uh, requests were no longer needed for us. So at this current time, we have no request for making any PPEs with our 3D printers. But we have set up our process to where if something was to come in down the road, uh, in need from one of our communities, we could help out in that way. And so, um, in general, a lot of planning going on now for the end of the year, uh, that I'll kind of talk about in some of the discussions of topics now that we know will be, uh, fully closed for the remainder of this school year. And, um, from there, I would just ask once again to, for the board to give me a little guidance on the page turn, uh, just so I can come to that next meeting with information about is that going to be, uh, a full board page turn, do it with the facilities and grounds committee, or do it with just President and Vice President?
Do you want that input now, Dr. Smith, or is that later?
No, I'm asking for that input right now, just as what, um, what we think we should do as far as, um, the, the input of when we get to that building, uh, part of going through the DD drawings. How should that be taken care of?
Well, I, I would think maybe Matt and, Matt and Ann and the facility and grounds committee.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking as well.
Does, with the number of people on that, we don't have a quorum sitting in there, would we? We just have four or five on buildings and grounds?
I think we have about six on buildings and grounds committee.
So I think, I think we should be okay with that.
Okay. Well, that's what I'll set it up. The dates will be somewhere between July thirteenth and seventeenth. Depending on when the drawings, that's the tentative schedule right now to do it. We'll try, I would think to do it as early as we could in the week, uh, so that any changes or things could be made, uh, to bring it to the board possibly for the July twenty-second board meeting approval.
Yeah, Rick, I think, Rick, I think I'm leaving for Alaska on the seventeenth, so if you can do it before that, that would be great.
Okay. I'll let, I'll let the team know who are setting this up, um, that would, that's what we would prefer to do is, is early in the week as we could. Eric, do you need more clarification on the attorney fees for him directing some of this, uh, traffic right now?
I, I do not. Uh, Rick and I had spoken. I don't have any issue with paying the, um, the attorney fees from, from the general fund. If the board felt different, uh, you would just need to tell me in resolution form.
And when we're talking about the general fund, we're talking about the interest area that we drew off of the investment?
Well, I think, I think you all need to be careful. When we put that money in the general fund, it's not like it's segregated. It's swimming in there with all the other general fund monies. So there's no separate accounting of general fund interest money.
And Eric, do we have, do we have any idea how much money we're talking for those attorney fees?
Uh, you know, he is, uh, Chris McCloskey is his name. He's putting a, he's putting a, uh, a quote together for us. Uh, I have no doubt this is going to be really expensive. Uh, but we have a, we have a multimillion dollar building project.
Yeah.
And I, I, I think even if this got into five figures, which it very well may, I, I think that is money very well spent.
Okay.
Agreed.
Okay.
I agree. So then does that complete everything, Dr. Smith?
That completes my update, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so we'll move on, just to announce that, um, the marked students of the month were Madison Boggs from the Allied Health and Nursing, um, two program from Mechanicsburg. And the other is Jacob Hill, a graphics design and printing two student from Triad, and we congratulate them. And then our staff member of the month is Dustin Tallis, the career tech educational aide. Um, so we're pleased to present them tonight. Dr. Smith, question of the month?
I do not have a question of the month this month. Um, well, I guess I do have a question of the month. Let me, uh, throw this out from, uh, the satellite, um, group that just came up this week. And that was, um, you guys typically get information from, or have in the past and the, and it's continued to happen, information from every satellite teacher, uh, every month in your board report. We also know that, um, some of the information that the directors put are also kind of highlighting some of the same things that they get from those teachers. And the question was asked, uh, does the board need something from every teacher every month? Um, uh, the way it is now, or could we just go with, uh, director highlights as being something we could take off the teacher's plate? How, how many are reading all those, uh, teacher reports every month?
Sometimes yes, and sometimes it's not.
Mm-hmm. I'd say probably.
Yeah, I, I'm reading them, but there is some redundancy there. I mean, I'm fine with the directors, at least, you know, we can talk about it again when we actually go back to school. But I don't think the teachers need anything else to be doing right now, for sure.
Anybody else have opinions? I, I, I feel as, um, the rest of you that has spoken that I think it's enough that we would hear from all of the directors, and, um, I think we would gain most of the information that way. Unless somebody really wants us to know something, then I, I'm okay with them submitting if that's, you know, what they would like to do. Otherwise, I don't think I hear it right now.
Okay, I don't think it hurts for extra submissions, and the directors do a great job of telling you, and of course, we also have Kelsey, who gets information from teachers that highlights that, uh, on our website and different things of what's going on across the district. And so i- it just might be helpful that, that every teacher doesn't have to write that every single month and, and maybe we even do something where, uh, we just take one school a month or something of that nature. Um, and, and, um, focus on them or highlight them or something like that if we're, if we're using satellite teacher information and, and highlight certain programs a different way in the director's report. So I think that would be very helpful to the staff that that doesn't have to be something monthly that done. Uh, Brian Wright has now got on to this.
Yes.
So Brian entered at seven eighteen. Uh, Ann, also, I, can you see my agenda up on the screen?
I can, but I also have mine up on my other iPad, too.
Well, I'm just thinking you might have went off the wrong agenda there because we were on April, and April, uh, student of the month, uh, was Emily Broad. Allied Health and Nursing to Upper Sider Valley. We had Emily Brooks from Smart Technology Engineering from Urbana City. And Shelley Swainy was staff member of the month from our career assessment and work skills coordinator in CBI.
Just for the record, that's Isaiah Brooks.
I'm sorry, Isaiah Brooks. What I, I'm, that's why I don't typically read these names. You guys all know that. So we're, we were, we would be on legislative report, Madam President.
I've got the right one. I'm so sorry, because both of those, those both up today, and I'm sorry that I did that.
That's okay. I just wanted to make sure people saw my agenda network.
Uh, yeah, I, I, I would never, I didn't want to short the students or Shelley, um, you know, from their awards. So then we would move to item number four, the committee reports and presentations. Paul, do you have something for us tonight?
Hey, what's going on? House Bill one ninety-seven, uh, just some of the highlights. It says, "School Report Cards. The department will not assign schools overall letter grade or individual component grades for nineteen-twenty report cards. However, the OD will continue to report any underlying data that has regarding school building performance for the nineteen-twenty school year. The absence of a report card for the nineteen-twenty school year will not excuse community schools already subject to mandatory closure in the twenty-twenty-one school year. Or that would otherwise be prohibited from changing sponsors due to prior report card scores." In other words, for automatic closure purposes, the three-year clock will not restart. Uh, access to in-person instructional experiences complete career tech requirements. The General Assembly expressed its intent that schools will grant students access to school facilities as soon as reasonably possible, even if the last day of the school's calendar year has ended in order to allow students to complete career tech requirements. Uh, teacher evaluations. Schools are prohibited from using value-added progress dimensions, scores to measure students' learning for the nineteen-twenty OTS evaluations. A teacher licensure, OD may issue a one-year non-renewable provision license for any educational license so long as the individual has met all license qualifications except for passing required, required exam.
Clear for takeoff.
Okay, um, and reading a little bit from, um, OSBA, um, there's no doubt we are facing one of the most criminalist, excuse me for mispronouncing, times for Ohio Public Education Academic Distress Commission, Education Choice Scholarship Program vouchers, school funding, and ever-increasing needs for social, emotional support and schools mounting an extremely high level of stress and anxiety among school leaders, teachers, communities, and students. An important piece of the center of these issues, the Ohio School Report Cards, they're definitely measures for many involving the higher public education legislative policies being enacted. Many leaders, including legislators, concede that the state report card is flawed and does not represent the full extent of the report being done in school, Ohio schools. The purely academic measures derived from the rest's results do not come close to taking into account the significant efforts to reach the growing population of disadvantaged children coming into our schools. So, and they go on, it's about a three-page report they have there. Basically, the report card is flawed, which we knew that, but, you know, OD, they, they, they think they're right every time.
Let me add to something Paul said, though, uh, about career techs. We, uh, as far as kids getting in the building and stuff, um, we are working on plans, uh, to determine, uh, we know how many students, uh, on main campus, uh, did not get, uh, credentials. We're working on plans in satellite, uh, to determine, uh, teacher availability, uh, what would they need to do to get in and get some of those, uh, credentials accomplished if we were allowed to have, uh, people back on campus. You know, I am hopeful that sometime in May, uh, the governor will open us up to where we, you know, we could do groups of five or, or small groups of things of that nature, uh, but we're trying to figure out teacher availability this summer, uh, work up a budget of what that might cost as far as the number of hours, uh, they would have to spend with students. So just like doing the FANIC, uh, certification, you know, the teacher has to observe them, uh, performing the task, uh, for that to, to earn the certification in FANIC, uh, Motoman, those type of things. And so, uh, we have different things now for STNA where the state is allowing for hours to be done in a lab setting instead of being done in a, in a clinical location. And so we had just gotten that information this last week, so we are trying to build a plan, uh, to get as many kids' credentials that have missed out on that opportunity as possible.
Okay, that sounds good. Anything else, Paul?
Now, that's all I have tonight. They, they've got a whole bunch of other stuff in there, but I mean, some pertain to us and most of it doesn't, but those are the highlights.
Okay, thank you so much for doing that. So item five, topics for discussion. Is there any call for modifications to the agenda?
Hey, can anybody here? We can hear you, Tom. You can? We can. Okay. I have no modifications to the agenda tonight, Madam President.
Okay, thank you. So, um, to go down the list, the two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty career tech interview contest winners?
Yeah, I don't, I don't have that in front of me, I'm sorry, uh, tonight, um. Tanya, do you have any of that information? I know you said you were looking for it, but. We'll, we'll come back to that, Madam President. If we find something, I, I don't have that with us.
Okay, and, and then do you have the comments on the honored educator dessert?
Yes, let me comment on the rest of these topics really altogether. I think is, uh, honor educator is canceled, senior breakfast. As we said last month, we were gonna wait to see what was gonna happen with school closings, and so we have canceled those as well. Uh, we do plan to have some type of convocation. We're working on, uh, multiple plans of virtual to, um, mailing stuff home to, to different concepts of, of a drive-in, uh, in small labs or something. So we have various plans that we're trying to address and look at what might be most feasible, uh, and reasonable to do. Um, we do have, uh, our really main work session is set up now for May thirteenth. Uh, I, I think the board, uh, needs to decide if that, if they want to leave it there and do it. It would probably be virtual. The way it looks like right now, things are not gonna be open. And so just like you see the presentation, uh, on the screen currently with the agenda, we would have to put our PowerPoints and our information up in a similar fashion, uh, if we wish to keep, uh, the work session on May thirteenth. Uh, regardless of that, we do need to have a policy meeting, um, at six o'clock, and we do need to have a facilities and grounds meeting on the update from what we know from our May twelfth, uh, information on the building project and as well as what has been taking place with the building during, um, this Corona nineteen, uh, shutdown and what is planned for this summer, and we look to how we might bring kids back into school safely, uh, or possibly even be doing some summer school type ideas. So I think it would be important to do the facilities and grounds meeting, uh, regardless, uh, type of thing.
So back to the May thirteenth meeting, that's usually when we discuss a lot of our five-year forecasts, correct?
Yes, that is. Um, and so, you know, I think we do have other questions as far as, uh, you know, state budgets and what might be looking for in the future and, and those type of things as well. Um, it, it would just, it would appear right now, it would have to, uh, probably be a virtual meeting again.
Okay. Do, do the other board members, um, are you okay with, um, doing the work session on thirteenth virtually?
I'm fine with that.
Absolutely.
No problem.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay. So if that's okay with you, Dr. Smith, then we'll continue with those.
We are preparing, uh, the five-year forecast. We're working on that tomorrow as an administrative team, and so we will be ready for that presentation on the thirteenth. I now have the three winners from the career tech interview contest. Thank you, uh, Tanya. Um, and that is, uh, Preston Bryan from Ridgemont, Summer Dow from Ben Logan, and Austin McCoy from Ben Logan. We're the three, uh, career tech interview contest winners this year.
Good for them. That's, that's nice. Thank you for doing that, for getting the information. So do we have anything further?
I have to comment Brad and Tanya for sending that information text to me, so I appreciate that on the fly.
Thank you. Yeah, yeah, we do, too. Um, so we're done with item five. The regular board meeting will be the twentieth.
Correct, our board meeting will still be the same, even if we, uh, do some type of virtual convocation, uh, we will keep all that the same way.
Okay. So we'll move to item six, um, approval for the minutes, a motion in a second to approve the minutes from the March twenty-fifth, um, Board of Education meeting.
Dunham.
Also, McMahill.
Questions or comments? If not, roll call, please.
Brookhart?
Yes.
Buck?
Yes.
Burrows?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dunham?
Yes.
Ludlow?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
McMahill?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Purcell?
Yes.
Reams?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Stanford?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
And Boswell?
Yes.
Motion carries. Dr. Smith, can you move the agenda up on your screen?
Yes, I can, sorry.
Because we would be at, um, item seven, there's not a need for executive session. So we would move to item eight, a motion in a second, um, to bring items eight A through eight E to the floor for discussion and vote.
Buck.
I heard Buck.
I heard somebody else, but I don't know who that is.
Ludlow. Ludlow.
Thank you. Okay, so Ludlow and Buck. For items eight A, approval of the March financial statement, um, Eric? Yeah.
Sure, uh, as promised, I, uh, I did go through and look at the, uh, real estate tax revenues. Uh, what I found was that, uh, I had actually done a pretty good job of estimating the ag decrease. I had estimated roughly a hundred and thousand dollar, a hundred and twenty mil. I had estimated roughly $120,000, $120 million in, in ag decreases. The actual decrease was about 140. So, that was pretty much on par. What I lost track of was where Ohio High Point was in the six-year update with Champaign, Logan, and Union Counties. I had estimated increases in the non-ag values of about $40 million. With the six-year in, increase, that was actually closer to about $380 million. We like that. So, so, the increases by far carried the ag decreases. And as I said, it's, it's hard to cry over the fact that you have $200,000 that you weren't anticipating coming in. But the, the thing that always worries me about that is it was a mistake. And yes, we came out on the positive side this time. But you know, those mistakes can go the other way just as easy. So, I, I do try to learn from those things and not find myself in that spot again. What is nice is now we have had those ag decreases in our four big counties. So, I believe in the calendar year 2021, Hardin County will be scheduled for the second of two ag decreases. I've got a pretty good idea of what that's going to be because I've already done it once. The same will be true in 2023 for Champaign, Logan, and Union Counties. We'll have done it once, it won't be such a, a black box trying to figure out what those decreases might be. So, I just wanted to give an update on that. On the expense side, I, I have no doubt that we will spend less money in non-personnel items over this last quarter school year. I'm not sure that I can really quantify what that is, but I can say with, with certainty that I, I believe that we will be adding to our general fund budget at the end of this year when you take into account the additional $200,000 in real estate revenues and then probably what will be a fair amount of money that we don't spend. March and April are heavy travel months for Career Tech. And it's, it is not uncommon to spend $100,000 for Career Tech travel to the various competitions that the students and programs attend. That's not happening this spring. So, right off the top, we can, we can write off those expenses occurring. So, I guess at this point, we only have two months in the school year left. What I'm worried about is the same thing that Rick is worried about. A lot can happen in two months, and we all heard Governor Dewan call for a 20% reduction in the state budget across the board. What you have to remember is that the state budget's on a two-year cycle, not every year like we do. So, there are actually 15 months left in this biennial budget. So, my big worry, and I'm sure Rick's is too, is if there are cuts coming, you know, because we see some of that yet in April, May, and June of this year. I've been around long enough that I know that anything is possible. You know, I don't have anything to share tonight, but certainly we would hope by the time we put that five-year forecast together in May, that if something is coming this school year, we will know what it is at that point. Are there, are there any questions about any other parts to the financial statement I'll just go ahead, I'll walk you through the balance of my agenda. It's fairly short this month.
Okay.
If you go down to item 8C, we are shifting some already budgeted money around. We're not increasing the general fund budget, but if you recall last month, our payroll continuation resolution, one of the specific items we did was continued payroll for three regular part-time cafeteria employees. I had to create that department in the general fund because it did not exist. They were their own fund prior to. And I estimate that the cost of those salaries plus benefits will be $15,000 over the balance of the school year. So, that's the $15,000 amount you see there is just shifting money in to cover that payroll continuation for the cafeteria workers that the general fund is picking up.
Okay.
On page four, my last two items, these are annual resolutions. 8D is just, we offer student or staff insurance through Stolling Insurance Agency. We just offer it. I have no idea whether people take advantage of that. That would be something that they would contact Stolling directly for. We just make it available as a school district if someone needs that. And then item 8E would just be my request that we continue to use Shakely Uniservice out of Cincinnati as our workers' comp representative and as our unemployment representative.
Okay. Thank you. Are there questions or comments from any of the other board members? I can't tell if you're shaking heads or not.
Yeah. I'm good.
Okay. If there's not, then anything further, we'll do roll call, Eric?
Buck? Chuck Buck?
Yes.
Dunham?
Yes. Yes.
Ludlow?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
McMahill?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Purcell?
Yes.
Reams?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Stanford?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
Boswell?
Yes.
Brookhart?
Yes.
And Chuck Buck?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. So, we'll move to item nine, a motion in a second to bring item 9A through 9H to the floor for discussion and vote.
Brookhart.
Buck.
Did you get those, Eric?
I'm good.
All right, thank you. So, Dr. Smith, internship agreements, do you want to comment on these?
Well, yeah, I'll just ask first, is there any questions over any of the general areas? Okay, if not, I just want to make sure that Brian Wright sees that I'm showing the agenda tonight, so I learned something from the last board meeting because he requested it. So, please document that on my evaluation. And so, as I go down, I think most of these things are standard, you know, our, our VOA fees and things that we do every year.
Right.
We have new textbooks adoptions. It's hard to show you the textbooks virtually, but if, if you see anything there that we would need to pull or that you really wanted to see, but typically, not a lot of go over the table and flip through those, as these are the standard updates as we look at curriculum every year that our supervisors do to pull these available so that we can have them here on site and get them ordered for the classes. And that's the theme, our district calendar, once again, we try to go, this is not next year, it's for the year after, so we try to stay one year ahead on the district calendar so that parents that do come to us and students know the two-year calendar when they join so they can see calendar for 2020 and calendar for 2021 and know when they come here as juniors what the calendar is during their time here at High Point. You also see in detail what PPEs we did donate around to the different districts. And, and then, though, that, that's all I have in my nine part. I'll have to talk about 10 when we get to House Bill 197. But that, if no one had any questions, that's kind of the updates of just general information of, of standard schoolwork for this time of year.
It's pretty comprehensive, thank you. Does anybody have questions or comments? I think people were very appreciative of the fact that we had some of the personal protective equipment, you know, to share with those areas needed. So, thank you for getting that all together. And then, if there's nothing else, Eric, roll call. Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
I have a question. This just, or will we have to replenish these before we start school again?
So, that will be part of the issue, I think, you know, if we can do summertime training and things of that nature, you know, will we be able to find the PPEs and the stuff available? You know, as, as Erica said, we, we haven't spent some on travel and different things, but we might have to readjust the budget to kind of replenish some of these PPE items as well as maybe look at summer school to get certifications. So, I think that's a conversation we're going to have to have over the next month as well that we can kind of bring to the five-year forecast when we're talking about spending money here at the end of the year. But, but yes, most likely, we will have to determine how to replace these items. I, I told them that if they were able to get certain federal grants for reimbursement or replacement, we would love to have that come to us from the EMAs, but if they didn't get any money for that type of stuff, we fully understood this was a complete donation by the Career Center.
Well, and then, Dr. Smith, the other thing we had loaned out also was all of our beds from the medical programs, correct?
That's correct. All the hospital beds from both main campus and from Clark State Nancy Knight Nursing Building was donated for use for another location in Bell Fountain. We don't have a cost of that, of course, but they're just on loan and, and know that there would need to be returned for us to start school back up. And we hope by that time, the, the pandemic, as far as being where the curve is flat enough where that would be possible, since cases are relatively low in the counties in which we serve.
I might, I might add to Dave's comment, if you, if you look at these PPE donations, I'm pretty sure that doesn't add up to $1,500. It, it won't be a money issue to replenish them. It'll probably be more of an availability issue.
That's correct.
That's, that's where I was coming. I didn't know if we would be able to get them.
I just saw, I did, I did see an email just yesterday about being able to order PPE stuff, that they had stuff in stocks. I, I don't know, it wasn't a company that I know or recognize, so I would let the supervisors go to our current vendors, but you know, people out there are saying that they have some of this stuff.
Anything further? If not, then roll call, Eric, please.
Burrows?
Yes.
Campbell? Dave Campbell?
Yes.
Ludlow?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
McMahill?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Purcell?
Yes.
Reams?
Yes.
Savage? Dan Savage?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
Boswell?
Yes.
Brookhart?
Yes.
Buck?
Yes.
Dan Savage?
Yes.
If you have everybody that's needed, then the motion carries. And then we'll bring items 10A and B to the floor for discussion and vote. A motion in a second, please.
These two items are because of House Bill 197, we are required to let you know that, you know, based on evaluations, some teachers will not be able to be evaluated because we don't have the data that is needed to complete the evaluations. And so, built into the system is selecting a COVID-19 exemption for this year. What that does is roll over their evaluation status to the same next year. So, if they had to do a full this year, they'll have to do a full again. If they were on a skip year, they'll get to do a skip year again. If they're on a contract year, though, we'll have to go ahead and put them on a full evaluation. So, other parts of this clause is just, you know, giving us as much flexibility as the law allows for us to try to complete as many evaluations as possible. The example of that is typically, we always take two SLOs, Student Learning Objectives, and, and calculate those as part of their evaluation. This year, if they have one completed, we're accepting one to try to get the evaluation done. This is one to, to, to try to keep people on, on schedules as much as possible, but also to prevent our admin staff from having to do like 95% of the evaluations next year again for people that maybe weren't going to be due, things like that because they skipped. So, that's really what the resolution on the evaluation part has to do with. And then, we had to present a distance learning plan to the state of Ohio. We, they will not require automatically pass resolutions to do Blizzard bags in July, August every year. And House Bill 197 kind of expanded Blizzard bags because Blizzard bags were typically just for calamity days, and these are not, of course, calamity days are not days off, but they're official school days where distance learning is supposed to take place. And so, we have built a plan to have every student that can have computers, the satellite programs have been doing the format of our partner schools. We have reached out and tried to find kids that we could not connect with and have done everything as far as that and have put that in a plan to the state that I did submit this week. But that is what this also is, you guys just authorizing us to kind of expand Blizzard bags and perform distance learning to the best of our ability.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments? If not, roll call, please, Eric?
Campbell?
Yes.
Dunham?
Yes.
Ludlow?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
McMahill?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Purcell?
Yes.
Reams?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Stanford?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
Boswell?
Yes.
Brookhart?
Yes.
Buck?
Yes.
And Burrows?
Yes.
Motion carries. And just before we adjourn, is there anything else for the good of the organization? And if not, then on behalf of education, we would truly like to thank our administrators and our supervisors and our teachers and the entire staff for stepping up to the plate to try to get all the students' needs served during this unprecedented time. So we greatly appreciate it. And we know just because of some of the calls that we've had on the items, there were, there was much to be taken care of, and I think we've done a great job in doing that. So thank you so much on behalf of the board.
Thank you. I'll pass that along at the admin meeting tomorrow.
Thank you so much. If there's nothing further, a motion and a second for adjournment. Okay, you've got, got your motion and your second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? If not, we are adjourned. You and be safe out there and take care of your loved ones.
Have a good night.
Bye.
Bye-bye.
Nate, Nate and Kelsey, if you want to stay on, I can talk to you for the press. Kelsey, did you hear me?
I did, I'm here.
Okay. Nate, do you want to talk to me here or call? Bill, or whoever it might be? Kelsey, can you still hear me?
Yes, I can.
I guess you can just text Nate and see if he just wants to, this might be him texting me. He says he'll call me. So, okay. Good night.
Good, good night.